Recording and recording.
Okay, excellent. So, good evening, everybody. I'm calling the meeting to order. And before we begin, I would like to ask the town manager to announce the protocols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town's YouTube. I ask that those within the ring remain quiet unless they are involved in the discussion, and that those attending over Zoom keep their cameras off and microphones muted, that they are not involved in the discussion. If you would like to speak or are on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. For those in person, please speak audibly toward any microphones or the microphone on the lectern. Before you make your comments, please state your name and the street that you live on for record keeping purposes. If this meeting gets interrupted, we will immediately end the Zoom and send out a new link via Zoom. No, in fact, you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So first is consideration of the agenda as presented.
Before the council moves to moves to consider the agenda as presented, I just wanted to make the council aware that a neighbor of one of the applicants tonight has asked that Agenda Item Five, which is the public hearing on forty-nine oh five Cumberland, be moved down in time as they are coming over from another intervention.
So what time?
They asked to move it to after the two year removal permits. So between Agenda Items Eight and Nine.
Okay, so we should not take the motion, sir.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move Item Five, which is the hearing of current application for forty-nine oh five Cumberland Avenue to yawn Item Eight. It will become the new Item Eight and Item Seven and so on.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is it a second? Hearing not all of us in favor? All of us opposed, thank you. I think there was an analyst. So we will begin with our public comment period. If any resident or guest has a comment or question, now is the time. Is there anybody Zooming there? Okay, thank you. We will move next to consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
I still have a first. Is there discussion, hearing not all of us in favor? All of us opposed? I think that passed unanimously. And the next item is the building report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you are aware, Doug Lohmeyer, our building permit administrator, Friday was his last day. He's officially retired from Somerset. He'll still be doing some flipping with us for a little bit, and we're looking for his replacement. So today I'll be giving the building report, which is pretty much a sound on report. So it was called Shambalist, forty-seven twenty-two Cumberland Avenue. The architect has submitted a concept plan to make several additions to the existing house. That has reviewed the plans and provided comments to the architect. And EBL variance was created by the council on November fourth, twenty twenty-four. And now we're waiting for them to apply for their building permit. Forty-eight fifteen Cumberland. With currently, after the council amended the driveway variance on November eighteenth, we are still with working with the neighbors to ensure everything is satisfactory there before work begins. Paint has been put on the ground in regards to the proposed driveway replacement and new concrete apron. And now we're just waiting for the final approval from the neighbors. I heard from them today, and they're reviewing the plans currently. Forty-seven fourteen Essex Avenue, the council granted a building permit and a demolition permit on July first, twenty twenty-four. Work has not begun on this property, and they still have not been approved by Montgomery County for work. Forty-seven twelve Fallstone, the applicant has submitted a building permit application for the demolition and construction of a new home. We reviewed the plans, and now they've been moved to stormwater review at Bayland. Forty-seven sixteen Fallstone, we're still working on the non-conforming fence with them. Twenty-nine oh six Fallstone, property owner received a building application permit on September ninth, twenty twenty-four to create a deck. The deck is currently being constructed. They said they should be done relatively soon. They made good progress on the project. Fifty-five fifteen Greystone Street, the applicant submitted an application to add a second store to the existing house. The work is almost done. We were actually waiting pretty much on the snow to all melt so we could check the site. So we actually should be closing that permit relatively soon. Fifty-five twenty-two Greystone. They have an application to install several hardscape features on their front and backyard as part of landscaping, and now Bayland is reviewing it. Fifty-five twenty-nine Surrey, their house is still under construction, and we're still dealing with the fence issue that's been discussed previously. Fifty-four eleven Trent, the homeowners are adding some hardscape features to the backyard and a new retaining wall. They, once that that work has been in progress. Fifty-five twenty Trent, the property owner has submitted a concept plan to enlarge and cover a new front porch to build a carport. We've sent, we've sent back our initial comments on the project. Fifty-five twenty-eight Trent Street, property owner plans on removing the existing house and building a new house. The council, appropriate application, work is ongoing, and the council extended the work until April twenty twenty-five. Fifty-four twelve Uppingham, property owner has submitted an application to build a new screen porch, and we're currently reviewing the plans. And it's been sent to Bayland. Fifty-four fourteen Uppingham. They reobserved some construction, so we reached out to them just to see what they're doing. Haven't heard back yet. And then with fifty-five twenty-nine Uppingham, the property owner submitted an application to add a screen porch. And that is the town Somerset building report. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, thank you. Council, President Bar, do you have any questions?
I have no questions on that report, no.
Councilor Serko?
No questions.
Councilor Hall?
No questions.
Councilor? Councilor Rova?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. So let me note that the time is seven oh seven. And remember, we have the twenty minute rule. So do we, do we think, Mr. Town Manager, it's okay to proceed with the forty-seven sixteen Okay, council, I assume every council is in a problem with that. So we will go to item number six. The public hearing consideration of the variance application submitted by Deborah Goodings for the property located forty-seven sixteen Dorset Avenue for the replacement of asphalt driveway and a reduction of the standard variance fee. So we begin. Today is February third, twenty twenty-five. This is a hearing before the town council, the town of Somerset, with the building permit amendment application submitted. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. And I need, I exchanged it. Who, for the building permit amendment application submitted by Deborah Goodings, who is seeking, number one, to construct a new driveway for the property located forty-seven sixteen Dorset Avenue. The plans for the proposed driveway necessitate a variance. Number two, specifically, the applicant is requesting a variance from Somerset Code Section one-one-twelve dash fourteen E five B, which reads in pertinent part, "All new or replaced driveways must be constructed of permeable materials." Number three, in addition, the applicant is seeking a reduction of the standard variance fee. We ask that residents be limited to one comment each, and they be limited to two minutes at a time. When you speak, please state your name and street before you make your comment. When your time is up, a buzzer will sound, and you will be asked to please finish your thought. If you wish to speak on Zoom, the town manager will call in residents by listed name or the last four digits of the phone number if no name is provided. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the town staff will present findings, submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present their application or comment on the report, whichever is appropriate. Finally, after that, the town council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. Then other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Then, if necessary, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record close. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. If any opposition is presented, the town attorney will be asked to write a decision, and a permit shall not be issued before the expiration of thirty days to allow time for an appeal. If no opposition is presented, the town manager will be asked to issue a permit. We now begin this hearing with the presentation of the staff findings and reports, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since this is a variance hearing, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our commentary.
I'm not in a position to present on the, on all the technical aspects of the request. I prepared an information report on the legal requirements for the variance, but
No comment instead. So basically, this application is for a variance. There's, the applicant is seeking to replace the driveway in kind. It is currently made out of asphalt. That is a non-permeable surface. As our code requires, we require driveways to be made out of permeable materials. So the applicant is simply seeking to replace it with a non-permeable surface. I, that is the staff report.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Town Manager, you're going to make your commentary after, at what point?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I don't have comments to provide unless the council has questions. So I prepared a report, confidential report highlighting the legal requirements for a variance and the findings that the council needs to make and making suggestions for things that the council may want in the record.
Okay, thank you.
But
So, so when, so you're just available for questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. That's correct.
Now, this is going to be, you have the opportunity. Could you, would you come over to the podium so people can see your, and hear your beautiful presentation? And we do have a, if you don't mind, we have a microphone on so that people out, out in the
You have to hold it.
Is that close to you? Is it on? Yep, there you go. Yes.
Proceed, thank you.
There's some of these screened-in portals that we want to add a bit faster, but not too many. Okay, so my name is Deborah Goodings. My husband, Bruce, and I have lived at forty-seven, so we're staying in our status. We bought this in nineteen ninety-five, so we are the owners, occupiers of this. And in three, as has already been stated, we ask permission to replace our existing asphalt driveway, which slopes toward our house foundations with asphalt on the same footprint. So as has been noted, the town bylaws specify permeable pavement must be used for replacement driveway. However, the Montgomery County Department of the Environment and the permeable pavement technical design manual notes that if a driveway slopes toward a house, the permeable pavement is not recommended. The reason for that is that it is not good to add water to the foundation of the house as it demands the stability of the foundation. So the town Somerset, of course, has the prerogative to apply stricter requirements over what is set down by Montgomery County. But I did request, in the interest of the engineering aspect of this, that a variance be granted, considerably granted. And also your stormwater engineer, Christopher Stapp, also has indicated that he has reviewed and supports the request. So I am happy to answer questions on that.
Okay.
And then if you want me to go on to the second one, I can do that after.
Well, why don't you present your whole?
The whole thing?
Yeah.
So the fee for requesting a variance is a thousand dollars. And I understand there is a precedent for simple variance requests to have that reduced, so I can propose an amount at this time and just suggest a reduction.
Okay, and is that
Do you want me to propose?
Exactly, someone will probably ask you.
So in looking at the schedule of fees, I see that fees are typically for a simple project like this, a hundred dollars. I understand that additional reviews were required for this, so I can understand the irony, but I can suggest that a thousand dollars is rather a high fee for such a simple variance.
Okay, thank you. Does that Thank you. If you don't mind staying there. Okay, excellent. So now, Council President Bar, do you have any questions?
How are you handling the drainage on the driveway at the moment?
The drainage is being brought in production. In our And then it goes out the side door.
Are you okay with that?
The stormwater that comes onto our property from uphill far exceeds the amount of water that's coming down from the driveway, so you just say it's a
So you're, you're not bothered by it, is what you're saying? You're not bothered by it currently?
I disagree.
Okay, all right.
That's my only question.
Thank you. Councilor Serko, do you have any questions?
I just want to clarify, this is just replacing an old driveway from a new driveway, the same footprint kind of slopes down towards your house. It appears that for the last, my reinvest for the little more than half of the length of the driveway, the slope is more than five degrees towards the house. Is that correct?
You mean slope?
The slope?
Yeah.
Sorry, slope.
The grade is a little bit, averages for about half of it, five point three percent.
Okay.
If they're, the council would like to ask that that grade be modified because the modification is so small. You can certainly address that. And of course, so as a civil engineer, I did the survey, of course.
Wow, you did the survey.
So you pick your points before you know what the values are, but the you know, it's, it's not a perfect concrete surface, so it would be five point three for the points that were just surveyed. Not, could be four point eight if they had been slightly
So you took the measurements for the appendix two drawing of the driveway, the whole?
I did.
Right here.
The only question to follow from what Robin asked, is it possible to install some sort of a drain at the bottom of the driveway where enters your carport to tap some of that down flow so it doesn't go into your
Do you mean as part of the permeable pavement or separately?
Separate. So let's, let's say you're putting asphalt, instead of just replacing asphalt and going all the way to the carport, why not put in one of those drains that's about six inches wide?
But then it has to go somewhere, the water that goes into that drain. And the street is higher than the rest of the property.
Okay. All right. I want to make any questions.
Thank you, Councilor Hall.
I guess I was, would have asked the same question that Steve asked, because I wondered if over the years you did look at other ways to drain the water away from your garage. Are there not ways to do that? The naive question on my part?
I mean, from the road, or
Yeah.
I mean, it comes into the carport and then it drains out side entrance toward our
It goes to carport on the west side.
And you're okay with that? It's not flooding them, is it?
Yep.
All right, that's my question.
Councilor Rova, do you have any questions?
Yes, I was going to ask you, are you in a position to comment on the engineering? And so, and it sounds like you are in a position. So you, you, there were two
I am, I am an in registered professional engineer.
Perfect. So you said there were engineering reasons, and what I understand of two engineering reasons, is that correct? One is that it is sloping towards your house. And the other is that you're worried that permeable might, that the water that might permeate might damage the foundation.
Those two are actually connected by bringing the water down, and then in the subgrade under the pavers for the permeable pavement, the water is sitting there intentionally by the design, as you well know. So it will permeate into the ground, but that is not good for the foundations.
I just want to clarify, those are the two main engineering reasons. When you said earlier, in their engineering reasons, are those the reasons for that?
They, they are, and yeah.
Okay.
For our side to pay up.
Okay. And, and just to clarify, while it goes into a open carport, not a enclosed garage, it's an open carport, it does, it has not been distorted in the way of water.
You know, there is, I mean, we didn't pave the carport, nor did we put in the original driveway, so it has created a channel by itself.
It has created, okay, interesting.
It's got a, so it comes in with, the car goes in and then goes out the side door. So perhaps the previous owners put that grading.
Understood, understood. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you, Sean.
Councilor Rova, do you have any questions?
So is the, is the only variance needed that the variance is for, it's not going to be permeable?
Exactly.
Okay, I have another question.
Same area of everything?
Yes. Okay.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, are there, is there anyone who are worried, anybody who's Okay, thank you. So now I will turn it over to, thank you. So now turn it over to the council president to lead the deliberations.
All right. Steve, why don't you start the discussion?
I I thought of the argument that the engineering design manual for Maryland recommends against permeable pavers in this type of situation, the fact that we're just talking about a one-for-one replacement of existing driveway. I am I'm comfortable with approving the proposed asphalt driveway. And I'm just sharing my thoughts that we discussed, moved the discussion along, and I would maybe recommend a fee of two hundred dollars because we did have some additional cost for the town.
All right. Beer?
People on the other side.
Fine.
Just, whatever, go ahead.
I'll go.
Okay.
All right. Um, so I think that, I think that it's, we should grant the variance, and I think that the fee should be like a hundred dollars because I, I actually think we need to look at this, like, again, because no one seems to be able to do a driveway, and there's always a reason why the permeable doesn't work. I mean, maybe we do something like, I don't know if you can do it like a a benefit if they put in a permeable driveway, like we'll cut a fee or something like that. Like, I don't know, but but I, I just don't think that this is really working intended, and for them to pay a thousand dollars to you know, have common sense say this is ridiculous. That's my thought.
All right, thank you. Debbie, since Kavir had been reluctant, so.
It's been show horse. I guess I, I agree that, you know, we do it one-on-one driveway, this makes sense to, you know, take out what they have, put in something nicer, better, whatever. But on the variance, here's my question. On the cost of the variance, what is our cost to do a variance? So instead of coming up with an arbitrary number, you know, what does it cost us to, to do a variance? And if it's, if it's a thousand dollars, then it's a thousand dollars. If it's two hundred, it's two hundred. I think we need to look at our fee structure and, and, and designate a fee that makes sense for the project. So that goes to you, EJ, or to you?
Yeah, I would say with your building permit administrator's time, with my time, it's well over a thousand dollars. It's probably around three thousand.
I'd love to say I can give a rough estimate of thirteen twenty-five for this.
Okay, so where is
But if, but I'm hearing that as a policy decision, the council may find that this type of request should not be subjected to a variance and that the code needs to be amended. And given that consideration, you could lower the fee in this case, as you did with respect to a prior case as referenced by the applicant where that was a, a driveway and a, and a fence, right? And the, the fee was waived in that case.
To, and Kavir?
Yeah, I can see reasons why we would grant variance here, in part because it's sloping towards the house and the whole idea of permeable drainage port so that we can tap the water before it leaves the property. In this case, it's kind of an artistic situation, we're living with this reality. I am less reluctant on the fees because I suspected that we were probably lower than the actual costs. So, but I appreciate Ron's opinion that, and Shannon's view that we may want to relook at this and, and change the court. I don't have an opinion on the fee. I think it should be at cost, and that's why they are there. But if the rest of the council members want to grant, you know, some, some grace on the fees, I would be happy to go.
Can I jump back in?
Go ahead.
I'm all for the whole grace thing, but I think we need to be careful. Because what's next? If we're going to change, if we're going to change our fee structure for something like this, so be it.
Yes.
But if we, if we do less on this one, then we need to be ready that, that, that's our bar.
Well, and the last one, the precedent that was brought up, I think we established hardship in our deliberation. I don't remember the details. So there was a hardship, I think. I didn't hear a hardship. So sorry, rest of the lot, and I don't want it to be arbitrary. At the same time, I agree that that we need to look at both why is that expensive potentially? And then two, whether we need to relook at the driveway. You know, go ahead.
No, I was just, I was just recalling the hardship argument from the prior case, and that was because it was such a small project, the cost of hiring an engineer would outweigh the, the cost of doing the actual work.
I think we, it was established, and we looked at the numbers. So just to be clear, again, I understand, and we want, we may want to give grace, but that was the precedent.
All right. What I'm hearing is we're all in favor of the variance. The question is what amount of fee do we charge? And the argument I'm hearing is that our code is not perfect. And actually, I resonate with that because we've had a case before where the driveway sloped towards the house, and we just did not cover that at all in the code. The code is also missing that when a driveway is running very close to a house, you really cannot have a permeable driveway because the water is going to flow into the foundation, as was pointed out to us. So the argument then is because our code is incomplete, we should not charge the whole fee. That's the logic of it. And if, if we accept that logic, then we should have a lower fee. I think Steve's two hundred is nearer what we should charge Shannon than your one hundred, if that's all right. Are we all okay with that generally, or?
I was going to say that we should charge five hundred. Because, because our fees are so much higher than this, and yet, you know, that, I think that, that, that I understand that it's, it's a high fee, it seems ridiculous because of the work that's being done, but we did do the work. We hired somebody to go out there and do the work. And we signed our attorney fees, but
I'm inclined to a fifty percent discount.
But one as well. But did we hire someone to go out and
Bayland had to do it.
Yeah. Okay, looks at it.
And Doug, and me. Three contractors looked at it.
So have, have we, since the driveway has been in the code for you must replace with permeable, have we had one house be able to put in a permeable driveway?
I would have to double check that.
And that's early days yet.
Yeah, the sample may not be reflective of possibility, despite the weaknesses of it, just, you know.
But I mean, every single new house, new build has not been able to do it.
Yeah, but we've only had a handful.
Yeah, but I mean, there've been several new houses, and like, you know, the spirit is of one in which the houses that are replacing the existing houses are generally taking up a lot more impermeable Taking up a lot more um impermeable space than before. When you have a like to like driveway in a situation and they're not using, you know, it's not permeable and they're making it non-permeable.
Maybe I could say it's a good topic for a work session, especially since we generally should revise the code.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's get this item finished here as well.
Yeah, that's fine, but I just, I I think five hundred dollars for something that we're not able to ever. Get through is high or something like this. They just wanna change their driveway.
The way to look at the fees is that we we just came to the council through a process and we got cost.
I understand, but but.
That's why we started, and in fact, the fee didn't even cover a cost.
No, I I I totally understand that, but our. But no one's ever been able to put in a driveway that matches that, we should be not having that in our code, and we should not be charging.
I think.
Bringing in Baylin for it, because.
We should do a work session on, hold one second, I I appreciate it, but we should do a work session on that. And to revise the code along the lines Robin was mentioning, if it's next to the house, if it's not, we can revise that. Um, go ahead.
I, to the extent it helps in your discussions, the prior applicant, the fee was reduced to two hundred dollars.
Okay, okay.
So it does, it does strike memory.
So, councilor, you were ready to make a motion? On the fee, on variance and the fee.
I would make a motion that. We approve the variance and we lower the fee to two hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, is it, um, Mr. Tenth, that's?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there discussion?
I amend it first, no, later.
And propose an amendment.
I propose an amendment?
What is the amendment?
The amendment would be that we, that we, that we do approve the variance, but we change the fee to five hundred dollars.
I.
Okay, so second of it. Second. Okay, so now you can discuss, so right now it's. Uh, the variance is approved and what's on the table is five hundred dollars.
We haven't still it's very yet, but that's for the amendment.
We haven't approved anything.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is the motion is to approve the variance. And the fee has been, the amendment is five hundred dollars as opposed to the primary motion two hundred. So the discussion on the motion as a.
Yes, so do we, is there any discussion on the five hundred, if not, we can word it down, provide it.
Yeah, cool.
All right, well, I I mean, I I I'm in favor of two hundred, Debbie, because I think really there's a fault in our code and we need to fix our code. So I think we should be done.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, so.
So.
It worked on the.
So we would have lost it.
There's a motion on the table, so, so the motion is for five hundred dollars. All those in favor?
This too.
Okay, so the motion, so the amendment fails, so now the motion is to approve the variance with the two hundred dollar. Fee. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those, thank you very much, thank you. Doctor. Goodness. We will now move to.
Thank you very much, if you would like my lipstick, if you would like help, um, looking at the bylaws, I'd be very happy to help.
Yeah, thank you.
Have Christopher stick.
He's very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is public hearing, consideration of a building permit application submitted. By Jamie Miller and Dudley Folks for the property located at forty nine oh four Fallstone Avenue. For the installation of a retaining wall, installation of an HVAC unit, and placement of a dumpster. So we begin, today is February third, twenty twenty five. This is a hearing for the town council of the town of Somerset. For the building permit amendment application submitted by Dudley Folks and Jamie Miller, who are seeking. Number one, to install a retaining wall around the existing walkout basement entrance at the left rear of the existing house. Second, to install a new HVAC unit at the rear of the house, and three, to place. Temporary dumpster on their property related to some interior works being undertaken. We ask the residents to be limited to one comment each, and that they be limited to two minutes at a time. When you speak, please speak before you make your comment. When your time is up, a buzzer will sound and you will be asked to please finish your thought. If you wish to speak on Zoom, the town manager will call in residents by listed name. Or the last four digits of the phone number if no name is provided. The hearing will observe the following order. First, Somerset, the staff. Will present findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Then the applicants will present or make a comment on the report, present their application, or make comments on the report. Next, the town council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. Next, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask a question of the applicant or present comments to the council. Then, if necessary, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony. After which, the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Lastly, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings, the facts, and the conclusions. Council may make a motion on a permit decision. If any opposition is presented, the town attorney will be asked to write a decision. And a permit shall not be issued before the expiration of thirty days to allow time for an appeal. If no opposition is presented, the town manager will be asked to issue a permit. We now begin this hearing with the presentation of the staff finding. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So back in November twenty twenty four, Dudley Fawcett and Jamie Miller, the property owners at forty nine oh four Fallstone. About a Baylen permit application to town of Somerset. As previously mentioned, they're looking to install a retaining wall. Around the existing walkout basement entrance at the left rear of the existing house. Install a a new HVAC unit at the rear of the house. And place a temporary dumpster on their property related to some interior work being undertaken. Uh, as a reminder, we do not regulate interior work. The Montgomery County Department of Permeating Services issued their permits for the project back in November. In December, uh, our permanent administrator gave, uh, their seal of approval, not in time for the January council meeting though. Uh, and then the applicant has stated that work would begin in early February. And they would expect work to be completed in June twenty twenty five. Uh, permit, our now former permanent administrator Doug Loemeyer reviewed the project and found that it complied with the town code. Our town arborist drafted a tree protection plan. And then I sent a notice ten days in advance to funding properties. Uh, of the hearing, I have not received any comments from any neighbors, and that goes to staff report.
And did there's, guys, further, is he? Is he commenting?
Uh, no trees are gonna be removed, and we're only protecting, you know, there's three trees, it's all three parts.
Okay, thank you. So, which applicant? You're gonna come.
Grant Saler, our, um.
Oh, cool. Oh, excellent.
Is gonna talk, is gonna.
Oh, okay, is that, is that? Okay, so he can identify himself. Thank you for attending, sir, if you could identify yourself and. Either present the application or comment on the report, whichever you prefer.
Um, first, can you hear? I can hear myself, it sounds good. All right, my name is Grant Saler, I'm a registered architect in Maryland, and um. As as the comments or the introductions to the project a moment ago, uh, most of this is interior work. We have the retaining wall, um, which is forty eight inches tall to zero. Um, under an existing addition, um, so this is gonna create a new walkout basement configuration. Um, to one, one new air conditioning unit to go next to two existing in the rear, and then um. We are going to, given the limited space on Fallstone Avenue, squeeze our dumpster on the driveway. Uh, for the remainder of the project, and that is it in a nutshell.
Thank you so very much. Council, president, or do you have any questions?
The only question is about why now for the retaining wall? In other words, you've been in the house quite a while. Um, why are you putting in a retaining wall at this point?
Yeah, um, it's an area where, well, you wanna answer, well, I can answer, but. It's an area where.
Probably should be on the mic, actually.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, be good if you can, thank you.
Hello?
Yep.
Um, it's an area under an addition that was done, um. To the property, like I can't believe it, an addition that was done to the property. In the, I believe in the late eighties, early nineties, I'm not entirely sure, um. But it's, so it's just a pile of dirt under there, it's always been, so our basement, uh, windows look out on a big pile of dirt. And we just decided to clear out some of that dirt, have a retaining wall, and have some usable space under there that we could exit through and maybe store some things underneath.
So it's creating space for you and storage space for you.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's my question.
Okay, council member, Sorko, do you have any questions?
I just wanted to, I I see a lot of brickwork in the drawing, and I I can't tell if. That's all sort of existing brickwork, whether you're adding any. Cert exterior cert, are you changing the foot crank of the house?
No.
Thank you. No other questions?
Councilor, do you have any questions?
Just um, on the AC unit, um, I see the picture where there's two in the back.
Yeah.
And is it, you getting a third?
It's a little one for a mini split for an unfinished garage that we're gonna use as an exercise room, so it'll be.
I see.
It'll be right next to them, it's about as big as a suitcase.
Okay, I know what those things are, thank you.
That's it.
Yeah, that's it.
Customer, Kuma.
I have a question, so we don't plan for for EJ, we don't need to do a sound. Test H five.
Okay, no, we would do a sound test.
We would do a sound test.
What's the install?
The H word permit would stipulate.
Yeah.
You're, you're done.
I'm done.
Thank you, customer, Rebecca, do you have any questions?
I have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Is anyone in the audience or on? Okay, I will turn it over to the council president to lead the deliberations and decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um. This side this time, Debbie, your thoughts on this one?
I think it's pretty straightforward, you, lean right.
All right, um, and Kavir?
Keep forward for me too.
All right, Shannon, any thoughts?
I agree with them.
And Steve?
Yep, no issues.
This one's gonna be breeze, all right.
Say you're prepared to make a motion, Mr. President.
Um, I, anyone online?
No.
No comments? Okay, um, I move the. Prove the building permit application submitted by Jamie Miller and Dudley Folks for their home at forty nine oh four Fallstone for the installation of a raining wall. Installation of an HVAC unit and the placement of temporary placement of a dumpster. I'm second.
Okay, is that the one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So I think I saw councilor, our second, is there a session?
Hearing none, all those in table.
All those, thank you, thank you. Thank you, everybody, thank you, okay. So now we will go back to earlier item. Isn't everybody here for, everybody's here for you now, and we're we're ahead. So I'm gonna go back to, I'm gonna go back to. So this is a public hearing, consideration of a permit amendment application. For the property located at forty nine oh five Cumberland Avenue, submitted by Guido, and isn't it Brett Sal?
Right, cuz I looked at it. Brett Shali, okay. I think I got it right last time, anyway.
Who are seeking number one, to amend their previously approved site plan to add an attached garage. Retaining wall, second, to amend their previously approved stormwater management plan. To account for the addition of the detached garage. And the hearing will observe the following order. First, is staff will present their findings, submit for the record. Or report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present the application or comment on the report. Next, the town council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application in hand. Then, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. With certain limitations that I will read if they're party, or present comments to the council. Then, if necessary, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony. After which, the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the rest is closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings, the fact, and the conclusions. The council will make a motion on the permit decision. If any opposition is presented. The town attorney will be asked to write a decision, and a permit shall not be issued before the expiration of thirty days. To allow time for an appeal. If no opposition is presented, the town manager will be asked to issue a permit. And we begin the hearing with the presentation of the staff findings and reports.
And Mr. Mayor, there is a preliminary matter.
Thank you.
Mr. Borick, through council, Michelle Rosenfeld has submitted a request for a continuance. And.
She's on Zoom, by the way.
Okay, and she's now with us?
Yep, she's on Zoom.
So she, she can.
We should give her the opportunity.
She can present that request, yes.
Okay.
And 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 before we do, Mr. Mayor, and she also submitted. Written testimony today at two forty two P M, wanted to make sure that's in the record, and have you seen that, Mr. Gordon? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, so, this is Ms. Rosen. I I brought. If you could, um. Put on your video and present your request, thank you, good evening.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, as as many of you may recall, this application had been presented in a different format. To the council about six months ago. The pending permit right now has extensive modifications. Uh, to the property in the form of extensive new and revised stormwater management plans. It introduces a lengthy driveway, a new garage, and a retaining wall. That immediately abuts the property line of of my clients who live right next door. And we need time to review and evaluate this information, we need time to consult with our engineer. Um, I have been out and our engineer has been unable to adequately review these documents. Given the history of this property and the fact that there's no immediate urgency for the council to hear this tonight. And the fact that my clients have a significant vested interest in making sure that they're fully informed about the changes. We would request a postponement to allow my clients adequate time to prepare the, their comments to the council.
Okay, thank you. So the, so the process is that now the applicant gets to speak, and then the council can then ask questions about.
Yes.
And then they will deliberate, but there's no requirement for public comment.
Correct, that's correct.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, so with the applicant, whoever or whoever's representing, please, um, identify yourself and. And respond to the.
Good evening. Oops, sorry, I don't do that again. Good evening, Matt Gordon, on behalf of the applicants. Um, our our position is that the materials are are in the record, they followed all the processes and requirements. Um, so submit this amendment, um, and we agree with the the town staff, the consultants that have found that it meets all. Requirements under the town code, um, and they were prepared to proceed tonight. I think as you recall, last summer or year today, it was after an extensive delay, um, to get to get to that point. Um, and the applicant, um, felt that it was critical at that time to get the building permit for the principal structure approved. Um, and had an opportunity to go back to the drawing board and come up with a garage that meets all the town code standards and requirements. Um, that doesn't require an aberrances, and it's as of right, um, so we think there's sufficient information. Um, for this body to review this evening, and that it would be unnecessary to delay this further, thank you.
Thank you, and you could just stay there in case there, to be able to see. Council, president, or do you have any question?
So this is, this is on whether the application should be continued to a later date since point, right?
Yes, correct.
I I really want to. Get you to answer what I heard, um, is the proposed retaining wall really on the edge of the property backing up to the neighbor's property? Because we've got setbacks that should govern that.
And Eric, Eric, he's.
Well, I, I'm I'm asking whoever is going to be responding, it is really the owners should respond. Um, the, in other words, if it allows that the retaining wall is.
Okay, so remember to identify yourself, cuz.
Yeah, absolutely, so we the person I, I'm doing it at forty nine oh five. And then uh the retaining wall is gonna be one foot from the property.
It's one foot from property. It is very close, all right, thank you.
Yeah, and then they saw more imagine they uh. Doors that being set. Able to initiate a clear picture of how this uh retaining wall is made of. And I.
I saw that, yes.
Right.
So it is very close to the neighbor's property then.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's your last question. No, second, uh are you adding a driveway at this point?
Yes.
You are adding a driveway.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're adding the driveway and the retaining wall, um turning the carport into a garage.
Yeah, absolutely, I don't know if you remember the story, uh basically uh you guys changed the code for the whole time. While I was going to my uh to the process. And then we went through five different store one matching uh plans. And then three days before the the game was put uh present. We were told that they your office made a previous stage. And so uh we had to basically just look at the plan again. And then honestly, my senior engineer. Couldn't make it anymore, and then uh we did what we could and I hired a different company. Look at the project and they came up with a way uh to basically satisfy all the uh. Town requirements. And then so that I can have my.
All right. Thanks, yes, those are my questions.
Thank you, Council member Serco.
Well, we're we're talking. Everyone here, so I I noticed that the attorney Rosenfeld had a hand raised at one point to make a comment, I just.
Well, I think that's a good question, so. Wouldn't wouldn't she be able to?
Yes, yeah, you as the.
After the questions.
You can follow whatever procedure you want, but the hearing body, the council, can indeed ask both attorneys to.
You understand, but who gets the right to provide the person making the.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so Ms. Rosenfeld, would you mind waiting until all the councils ask questions? And do a complete rebuttal then, or would you rather do it one by one?
I'm I'm happy to wait, thank you.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, Councilor Serco.
Yeah, I think I have two questions, one on the driveway. Does any part of this driveway need to be permeable in accordance with the town's. Driveway code, stormwater management code, that's separate from the county.
And I think this question should be wrapped within. Or to to air. My understanding is that if the slope is greater than five percent.
That is correct.
You're allowed to put a cement. And then I needed this cement in the area where the car is forced to go straight. And then at the other areas. I had to bring the and just that's the end.
Sorry, the other areas are what?
I think before, there is one area that is basically around next to the house.
I see.
In that case, the car goes straight. And so it's it was okay for me just to strip towards cement.
Oh, I see.
To then basically the amount of cement that I was using, and then uh but before and after.
Okay.
For the driveway, and then also it's Montgomery County, my understanding of Montgomery County. Uh for steel, in the first ten feet from the house, to use impermeable impermeable material. And so that was my understanding, so that gave.
Mr. Mayor, I can add that the existing. Permit and decision approving the permit provides that although the driveway is to be replaced, the new driveway need not be constructed of permeable materials. Per the town code because the slope is greater than five percent, so the council made that finding in connection with the the hearing in May.
And I was just gonna answer that Baylen has reviewed these plans.
Okay.
I I I wanna mention, Ms. Rosenfeld, can you hear everything?
I I can hear most of it, I'm having a little bit of difficulty understanding the applicant.
Okay, can you, I'm asking you, so did you need to ask him any questions about what he just said?
It sounds to me as if you are not going to use any impervious material on the driveway, did I understand that correctly?
He's going to use cement.
Thank you.
So other than that, you and now you can hear him?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, okay.
And one other question, the retaining wall.
Yeah.
I don't recall the details of the county code, but I believe that the. You can have a retaining wall close to the property line as long as the height is low.
Right.
Can, do you, your engineer specify that?
Yes, this is Eric Tid with Cast Engineering, um we're the engineer on the project, um the plan shows the retaining wall. At the closest point to the right of way, uh it's six inches tall. Um and then as you go back towards the rear of the property, uh goes to. Just under three feet. And it's all in a cut situation, so it's not a visible wall from the neighbor.
Okay. But what is the the limit, like if you have a a fence?
Montgomery County allows um retaining walls less than six and a half feet in height to be uh. Quote unquote, on the property line, uh anything beyond six and a half feet in height, they're considered accessory structures. And then held to Montgomery County accessory structure setbacks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
No further questions, Councilor Hell, do you have any questions?
Um I'm just not understanding this retaining wall business, what do we have? Rules about the retaining wall, the county is one foot from the property line and we are. We have front setbacks, we don't have setbacks from adjoining properties.
Can I ask a question? I it sounds, it sounds to me as if we are talking about the merits of the application. Um are are we still on the preliminary discussion with respect to whether or not it would be a postponement? Thank you.
So are you, so are you objecting to any of these? Questions?
I'm just trying to make sure I clearly understand where we are in the process. And I I have no concerns about questions if these relate to. The things you need to consider in whether or not you approve or deny a postponement.
Okay, so be sure to put all that in your rebuttal. So it's clear at the end before they start discussing.
Thank you.
Can I just sort of summarize at the moment, this is about whether there is a need for a continuance, okay, that's that's what your focus is at the moment, is there enough?
Right.
Of a change here that people need time to study it, okay.
They understand that, okay.
Thank you.
I just have, just follow the last. Okay, well, just, that's good.
Councilor Kuma.
I appreciate that clarification for those wondering whether we are approving the continuation or not. So on that front, I I have a question for the uh attorney Rosenfeld, if I can ask her a question, I'm not sure.
Yes.
If I can, okay, when did you receive the materials?
We received, we we received the materials at the time the application was, uh we received notice of the hearing. Ten days ago.
Ten days ago, okay.
Correct.
Now, you said you were not able to review the materials over these ten days. Could you, I didn't quite understand why you were not able to review the materials over the ten days.
We were able to look at the materials, we were not able to have them thoroughly reviewed by our engineer because of his workload. And the changes, uh you you heard the applicant uh explain that there were. Significant modifications to the design of the garage itself, just looking at the plans. I, as a layperson, can see there were significant changes to the stormwater management plan. There's significant additional impervious coverage beyond what had been approved in the last permit. And there's a retaining wall that runs a hundred and fifty feet, the length of the property. A foot set set off about a foot from the shared property line. Um there is a differential in grade and given the fact that number one, the changes are significant. Number two, they seriously impact drainage. And number three, because this is a driveway in a garage, it does not. Seem to me that there would be any prejudice to the applicant for a thirty day continuance. For us to review these carefully with technical experts who can look at that and advise us. With respect to the scope of the change and the potential impact of the change. That a thirty day postponement really would be harmless, um these these changes will be there for a very long time. And so my client has an interest in ensuring that he understands what's being presented. So if he has concerns, he can articulate them to you through the eyes of someone other than a layperson. And that's the basis for our continuance request.
I appreciate that, a quick follow up, I cannot ask you to speak just now, hold on, a quick follow up is. But in your opinion, that process was followed in getting you the materials uh ten days in advance of the hearing.
Technically, the process was followed, that's correct, and uh you know, but we don't, we don't have any control over when that information comes out. And we have done our due diligence to try and get these materials thoroughly and timely reviewed. And under the circumstances, we are asking that the council exercise its discretion to give us more time to do that.
Okay, I appreciate that, I have a question now for the staff. Ron, could you remind us what did we permit last time? And then what is different, or what are the additions made in the application this time? To establish whether it is indeed substantive changes.
Okay, so are you able to do that?
So let me pull up the decision.
So yeah, the initial decision was for new house. Detached garage, which was removed. Driveway installation of two HVAC units.
Original application had a detached garage.
Yes.
Was then subsequently removed when?
Prior to the hearing.
Prior to the hearing, okay.
And removal of twelve trees. That was the demolition dumpster tray removal and then permit application for new house, detached garage, driveway, installation of two HVAC units. And removal of twelve trees, and then the garage was removed.
And and on, so on the garage it was removed, on the driveway it's the same, or it's different?
I'm not able to to answer that.
Part of how maybe this will help is I can show you the site li- site plan previously approved real quick.
Sure.
And then I can show you uh what it looks like now.
Robin, I'm asking because.
Unfortunately, so this was the site plan that the council previously approved. I'll focus on the main areas, I don't know if you can see what else is.
Yes.
The driveway here, uh there's, this is where the retaining wall will be, has been proposed now. And here you have a lantern box, this is where the detached garage is, and then this is kind of left untouched. Uh and the revised site plan. Adds. On the on the right side of the house. Including the retaining wall, the back, including the proposed garage, and this is the new stormwater uh management feature.
So the the but the driveway is the same, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Uh the driveway itself.
Yes.
Yes.
Doesn't look to be the same.
It's not.
Like in terms of.
The driveway in terms of how it's engineered.
Oh, it's engineering is different, yes.
The carport is now, the garage is bad.
Yeah.
And then as a result of that, there's a proposed new stormwater.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Roback, do you have any questions?
Um when did you guys, just like when was this plan first discussed with the town?
This was submitted to the town back in December.
December?
For our review.
You mean the changes?
Yes, the revised plan was submitted to the town in December.
And then, but then it it gets to them just with ten days.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I definitely agree that ten days is not enough time.
You you'll be discussing it.
Now it's just you have questions for.
Do you have to get this done through Montgomery County?
Yeah.
And but has it been submitted to them?
Yeah.
And so do you know how, do you anticipate when their time?
Any day.
Any day now? Um and I mean, due to the nature of the original house situation. Did you guys just not wanna bring it to the next door neighbors and kind of fill them in on what was going on?
And we thought it probably possible, basically a possible.
Okay, um cuz. Okay, well, it's not my.
You you'll be, you'll be debating, but do you have any other questions, so you have enough information to convey?
And we're gonna do a second round.
Is that my neighbor probably is eight feet above mine on average. So I mean, for a stormwater management perspective, I personally am non expert. I personally, I don't, I don't see a problem.
You don't what?
I don't see a problem from a stormwater management perspective because he's located.
Above the hill, yeah. But I wonder, do we, did we give notice to the people that are down the hill?
We gave notice to all but any properties.
Including Drummond?
Not Drummond, our code doesn't require us to give notice to Drummond.
So just the next door neighbors on both sides?
In some, in across the street.
Oh, across the street count?
Full properties. I think five.
Five.
Um. Okay. And then, do you have another question?
Let me do a second round in case you.
Okay, I think I'm, I can't remember my other question.
Maybe you will, Council President, Mark, do you have any further questions?
Yeah, um. The attorney for the neighbors has said that it's of no matter to you to continue it for thirty days. Um so that the hearing is at our next meeting, is that true? Is it no matter to you?
No.
So what are the costs to you?
I I cannot quantify, there are so many. Files involved that between the property taxes, interest, delays, and so on.
So it's financial as well as inconvenience?
I mean, I'm gonna have the uh food floor delivered tomorrow and the kitchen is still very rough.
All right.
Council member Serco, do you have any further question?
Well, uh Robin, Robin asked a question I was gonna ask.
Oh. Sorry. Nice, just had a good idea, so.
I had a question for Ron, but do I wait until we have our internal deliberations? That's a good idea, well, no, I'll let him hold that secret if he wishes. Do we have any basis to 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 postpone or delay? This request since the applicant followed the process?
So it's it's a difficult question, I think the council's on the right track in in weighing the equities. The applicant argues that this is a request for construction as of right. And so the code only requires uh ten days' notice. It's not a full fledged adversarial hearing like a variance, you know, on on the other hand. Uh the applicant's neighbors do have a due process right in making sure the permit is properly issued under the town code. Um I apologize for saying out loud, oh, you know, I had a good idea, but I'm, you know, thinking about what might be. Uh fair to both parties and just for the council's consideration, I'll note that the town code provides that. Any person aggrieved by a a decision on whether a permit is issued. Can appeal that to the town council. So. This isn't necessarily the neighbor's last opportunity. If the hearing on the permit application were to proceed tonight. The applicant's neighbors can appeal the decision on whether the permit was properly entered, and so, you know, that's. That, just let me make sure I have the the timing right.
Is that an appeal to the council or does that go up to the county?
No, to the council.
Yes, yes, I wanna make sure that's right.
But I think that this discussion is better after the elections start.
I don't have any other questions. Yeah, I, I think we should.
Oh, wait, wait a minute. I, I think I made a mistake. This appeal is from a, a decision by the mayor. So if a decision by the full council would go right to the circuit court. So yeah, I apologize for that. It wasn't a good idea.
No. Okay, Councilor Hall, do you have any questions?
Two questions, only one which I can remember. Um, in, in, so your house is built and you're getting ready to put in your kitchen and do all that?
Correct.
So if the if the, if the garage comes later, you can still live in your house? You don't, you don't get an occupancy permit based on your garage, do you?
Yeah, I need to put in a store owner management who have a property. I cannot do, I cannot just.
Right. Okay, and the stormwater management plan has changed because of the garage and the retaining wall?
The stormwater management changed, it gets because of the.
Okay, so that's the problem here.
I, I think the stormwater management is better. Before there was a, a lantern box made of cement. That is, was not pretty. And then now it's all, it's a higher pension area and so on. So I think. It's I don't know, from our perspective, we look at a property and then we feel that what we created it, it's better than property, it's better than all things.
Okay, right.
And, and by the way, I want to take a rapid, we're not building, you know, I'm just thinking of the danger wall. I mean, I don't know where they, they're always. I need to adopt one of these. Because I, I think my property is top.
When you talk, do you go deeper?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't.
It's no problem. Ms. Rosenfeld, did you hear all that?
Yes, and if I may, when the time is, is right, I'd like to make two, two additional comments.
You, you will have a chance. We're almost finished. The random, you'll have a chance before they deliver. So you're, you're finishing the questions.
Councilor Hallard.
I'm done.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar. Do you have any further questions?
Yes, I have a question for the town staff. Have we completed our process of assessing this application?
Yes.
But why isn't there a more detailed report from Baywatch? Given the extensive nature of the stormwater intervention, it's barely half a page.
I think, uh, since I think Baywatch saw it as more of a.
Complying as, as over and beyond the code, complying the code?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Give a full report was because of, uh, it was submitted to them as just a simple permanent amendment.
I see.
And so it, they didn't view it as a full application.
But did they scrutinize?
But they did scrutinize it, um, and they, they did have to go back for a, a second round. Okay, it went through the whole process.
Okay.
Um, and I can have a, I obviously can't be ready tonight, but I can have them, uh, draft a detailed report for the council.
How long would it take?
I'll have to check with them. Uh, I assume not long.
Less than ten days?
I would assume so, yes.
Guido, if we continue this for ten days, would that impose undue hardship on you? Not thirty days, but ten days?
Unfortunately, I think so. I mean, even back, well, show up the other day and then I had to say, oh, like my, the people were doing this here. And then, and I told them the following day, oh, you can come back, you know, now since back, back, it's more like sort of control, and then obviously they didn't come back. And then I don't know when I'm gonna see them. Uh, hopefully actually sometimes I do. So I mean, every stage it's like.
It's like.
And like, for example, the retaining wall that I know on the left side, it's important to put it up because, uh, I need to put the gas line together. Again, I need to be ready when the gas line, you know, somebody who has the gas decides to throw up. Who knows when, they never go to get anything for the big companies to throw up, whatever they want. So it's, it's.
But is it fair to say that thirty days is unreasonable, ten days might be better than thirty days?
Ten days better than thirty days, obviously, I mean, like, that's. The four things, but then, uh, saying that even ten days, I'm not trying to. You know?
That's not.
That's not, that's not.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that.
And that's what I'm saying. We are painting, that will discover, I'm sorry, uh, our woodwork that is more and then even their hard floors. Coming tomorrow, next week, they, they hard wood floor guy is supposed to come. If it's white, it's not done, you know? For whatever reason, then my kitchen, you know, this is how it is. Everything's like, this, this is a, a project like this. There's small things, but everything is, is, I mean, one delay can cause several delay. I mean, think about the, the fact that the town may, they disable my application. I was thinking, okay, I'll put two car parts and move on with my life. It took three months. It got approved. By November, three months. I mean, that little thing, it cost me twenty-five thousand dollars. So, you know, and at this stage of the process, where basically you know, spending money, spending money, spending money, you know, you just want to get it done and move on.
Appreciate it. Um, I want to follow up on, thank you for that. I have one thing I do remember from the last hearing was there were set of trees in the back right side of the property.
Yes.
What is the impact of your new, your updated proposal on those trees?
There is no turning point change.
That would be a good question for our.
Yes. And in, in your assessment, there's no additional change? So those were, I remember like twelve, thirteen, fourteen, there was some numbers. No, okay.
So there's this thing.
No, it was here. The trees were here.
They, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and were the three, three that.
Were, were, were kind of the fencing between your property and, and they, they were on the, on the property line, if I remember.
On the other side, maybe.
On the other side?
No.
I'm pretty sure they were here.
I can, I can add a, a board from a, a, a folder. And then, then there were three things somewhere. There was twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Yeah.
There was a four inches, uh, red bud. And six inches, the cherry tree, and then a great marble that you guys.
You own these trees well now.
And then, uh.
Yes.
Uh, there were, there are a few, there used to be thirteen, fourteen feet from the property line. And then they used to be basically where my foundation is. And so.
Your words, okay. Uh, and Ms. Rosenfeld, uh, would you or your, um, client like to make any additional clarifications? Your client.
She's gonna, she's gonna.
Can I ask my other questions?
Hold on. Okay, do you have any other questions?
Oh, okay, no, no more questions.
Okay, Councilor Roback.
Um. You guys, so because you don't have Montgomery County permit, you can't do this work regardless.
Right.
So, I mean, us holding it back a certain amount of days isn't going to impact that work because Montgomery County hasn't permitted it.
And we already received comment from Montgomery County, already replied, I think Eric might say, I'd be able to say something. Eric, can you say something about it? Okay.
Yes, yes, this is Eric Tidcast Engineering again. Yes, we have, uh, remitted these final plans to the county for their final approval. Um, which, like Guido said earlier, is, um, pending any day.
But. Okay, no, I mean, I just, it, it's just that the work can't be done regardless and no one knows, right, when Montgomery County is actually gonna sign off on it. I mean, they can tend to take their time, right?
Uh, Eric speaking, because he knows where it is, it's cycle.
Uh, uh, um, I mean, generally, I would say that while timelines do vary between reviewers, um, more often than not, reviewers will take um, second or third review comments ahead of other plans, sort of as, as an attempt to kind of fill in their day. Um, obviously, that's not a guarantee, but you know, in, in twenty plus years of practice, that seems to be their general MO. Um, but you're right. I, I have no guarantees that it will be tomorrow, but it could certainly be by the end of the week. It could be beginning of the next week. I, I just don't know. And Montgomery County will never, won't commit to a timeline.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I think at this point, I'm going to ask, uh, Ms. Rosenfeld to present her rebuttal, and then there will be a final round of questions from the council. After which, uh, this portion will be closed and I will turn over the council to deliberate the question. So. Go forward.
Thank you.
Attorney Rosenfeld.
Thank you very much. I want to be clear that when the garage was removed from the original set of plans that were considered by the council about six months ago, um, and I'm reading now from the council's decision. It says, I, the applicant's counsel explained that in order to address some of the concerns raised by neighbors, i.e. my clients, a previously proposed detached garage has been removed from the plans. This same garage is now reappeared six months later in a different form. Significantly different form, completely different stormwater management. The garage is now located in the place where stormwater management previously had been located. And although the, the approved plans had a parking pad in front of the house, there was no driveway extending down the side of the property from the front of the house back to a garage. And so there have been significant changes, material changes, that go to the heart of some of the concerns that were raised by my clients last time. With respect to not having an expert, I read plans a lot. I am not an expert. To me, it looks like the retaining wall is a hundred and fifty feet long, but clearly I don't know. I've been corrected by the applicant. That's why it's so critical for my client to have somebody who knows how to read these plans and let us know if there is a potential concern. If there are issues that we should raise to the council. We don't know what we don't know. With respect to an appeal to the court, any arguments that we don't present to the council tonight are waived. We cannot raise them to a court. We cannot later go back and say the council didn't consider this information because it wasn't presented to them. It's not in the record. My client is prejudiced both with respect to being able to effectively raise concerns, and there may be none. But we don't know. Like I said, we don't know what we don't know. My client is prejudiced in his inability to present an effective case tonight based on knowledgeable reading of the plans. And he would be prejudiced in any future appeal should, should the council decide tonight to grant that appeal. Because we would have waived those arguments on the merits. So again, I, you know, I, a, a shorter period of time than thirty days certainly seems reasonable to me, given the, the potential physical impacts to my client's property. Equity would say ten days is not prejudicial when you're weighing the balance between the two property interests. And there are two property interests. So again, we would request a delay and, um, uh, the council has discretion to grant a postponement. There are no standards that specifically govern how you make that decision, and we think under the facts of this case, it's the equitable thing to do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council President, Margie. This is the final round.
I have no further questions.
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It might be prudent to have a very quick closed session to get legal advice.
Do you want to do it before?
Yeah, before the council acts on the motion.
Before, before the last set of questions.
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Ryan will.
Yeah.
Ryan will.
Motion to enter closed session to obtain legal advice related to the motion to postpone that has been submitted under the general provisions article of the Maryland Code, section three through five B, seven, subparagraph seven.
Is there a second to that?
My second.
Is your discussion?
Reporting in progress.
Okay, so before we begin again, I'm gonna ask the town manager to announce the protocols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this meeting is being recorded for those who are just joining us. If you, uh, are not involved in the current discussion, please remain quiet and keep yourself muted and your camera off. If you are involved in the session, please turn your camera on. If the Zoom meeting gets interrupted for any purpose, we are immediately in bit and I was not, you will be Zoom. I can't back you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So what the process is now is we will continue with questions, a final round of questions by the council, followed by Ms. Rosenfeld making any rebuttal. And then after that, we will, I will turn it over to the town council president to lead the discussion, the decision on the request that has been made to continue the hearing for thirty days. And Council President.
Right, I said already that I have no further questions at this time on the continuation of motion.
Well, okay, okay, Council member, circuit, do you have any questions?
No further questions.
I have a question. Um, I have a question for the applicant.
Okay, say it.
You mentioned that, you know, the gas line has to be, um, we're holding up the gas line? And don't you, you not have gas into the house already?
No, I don't have gas.
So you built this house without the gas line being put in?
I mean, there is gonna be a gas line. It's just it's not connected to the main.
So.
Or to Washington.
Okay, so in other words, Washington Gas has to come out and do their thing, but you, but your, your construction for a gas line into your home is done. Okay, that's, that was my question.
Councilor Kumar. Steve was talking.
I have one question, just to clarify. In your opinion, what is the length of the retain?
Can I jump in?
Yeah, why don't you ask?
Sure, this is Eric. Cast engineer. Um, the retaining wall parallels to the property line is about seventy-one feet.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. Um, yeah, no more questions.
Thank you, Councilor Roback.
Um, I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Now, Ms. Rosenfeld, you have an opportunity to prevent, present any rebuttal before the council begins their deliberations on your request.
Thank you, and, and, and I think I, I really summed up, um, our, our, uh, request, I, just a few moments ago. Uh, this is, uh, it might be very straightforward to the applicant. This is his business. This is what he does. His engineer is uh, here before you to tell you their view of what the application is and I, again, this is, this is specifically, these are the elements of the project that the applicant withdrew just prior to the last hearing to address my client's concerns. And now they're back. And of the ten days' notice that we have, I think four of them were weekend days. It's not a lot of time. It's a significant change to the project. There are significant changes to the grading and topography, significant changes to the location and style of stormwater management. And again, I, it's just exceedingly difficult for me to see how the applicant is prejudiced if we have some more time to allow our expert to review these plans to make sure that my client understands what's happening and has assurance that either there's no issue here, or if there is, that we can speak intelligently to it, to the council. Again, this is not a change that's going to be in place for a few days or weeks or months. You build a retaining wall because it's in place for a long time. You build a garage and these kinds of stormwater facilities because they're in place for a long time. And not having that information would prejudice, prejudice us if for some reason we felt like we had grounds for appeal. Because we cannot put the substantive evidence in the record that we would need to make to protect those arguments, to preserve those arguments. So again, you know, just on balance, looking at the equities, ten days or so seems eminently fair and reasonable under these circumstances. And we ask for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now the. So now the hearing is, and this request is completed, the record is closed. I will now turn it over to the council president to lead the deliberation decision, okay? You may be addressed then. Thank you.
All right, so again, the deliberation is on the continuation motion, so let's confine ourselves to arguments concerning the continuation. Um, and, uh, let's see, Debbie, your thoughts?
Um, I think we should continue it. Um, I feel that with the cha- this, this permit change is so great, it's, you know, there was a garage, and now the garage is taken out, now it's coming back, and it, it sounds like the applicant has, has work to do, and I think so too.
All right, um, and Steve?
Well. Um, as with other permit applications, Rob, you know, I'm, I'm interested in stormwater management, and I'm uh, somewhat concerned or confused by the, the positive information from Bayland in their letter to us. So I, I would like to know more about how this very large driveway and the garage does or does not satisfy stormwater requirements.
So you need more description from?
I, I would like Bayland to provide a more substantive report and assess.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, and Shannon?
Um, yeah, I, I, I agree, I just don't have, I don't feel like I have enough information right now.
Um, okay. Well, I think that Ms. Rosenfeld's, uh, claim that her engineer was overloaded and could not review this wasn't a legitimate argument for why they couldn't review this, the process was followed. Um, but at the same time, unfortunately, we don't have enough information as council to really look at the permit application early today, and we may end up denying it because we don't have, uh, all the permanent amendment, we don't have all the information, especially including the Bayland report, which I think because it was an amendment, they just gave us, you know, use the green light without the background information, and it's very extensive, very good, but very extensive stormwater, so I, I'm also inclined to think we need a continuation. I do think that Mr. Rattelli, you know, made a case for extensive hardship, quantified that hardship. So we should really err on the side of the, you know, minimalist extension that we could give that, you know, fits with, I think there's a notice period that we need to give, and so automatically, they will put it ten days.
Yeah.
So we, we need to, you know, ten to fifteen days, maybe the next work session that's already on the books could be a marker, that would be my, my suggestion, so we don't delay it any further for the applicant.
All right, yeah, and, I mean, I'm hearing from you that you are supportive of continuing it for a variety of reasons. Um, partly because of the arguments Ms. Rosenfeld made, but partly also because we're missing information ourselves. Um, we're missing information from Chris Step, uh, who gave us a very summarized statement of the stormwater management plan, even though it is a potentially revised plan, and so we are seeking more information from him, so as to assure ourselves that it is in fact appropriate for the construction. I will also note that we are lacking building administrators' notes on the plan now, which, um, goes to things like how extensive the retaining wall is and, uh, the extent of the driveway. Um, and that's, that's missing from, from this report, so there's argument from our side to continue it because we need that information, so that's roughly where we are.
So you're prepared to make a motion?
I.
When's our next work session?
What's that?
When is our next work session?
February twenty-fourth. Yeah, so I, I move that we continue this application to our February twenty-fourth meeting, we will have a council meeting at our work session, in order to handle it, I, um.
Is there a second?
Second. Debbie, Debbie wants to say.
I second.
Okay, I saw, okay. Thank you, is your discussion?
Is that, is that, that's.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion, hearing that all is in favor. Okay, so thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we might just suggest as a, a practical matter, we could, we could ask the applicant and the neighbors whether they're available on that day.
Ms. Rosenfeld.
You're, you're. I am available that day.
The, it's, it's five, it's just that we started five-thirty.
But if they have any way to do it sooner, we talked about going to the sex stop for one day.
The decision was, um, the twenty-fourth. So are you available the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, we should have lots of DPS from where management from.
Okay, so we thought, is it, you're available, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you very much.
To the matter. The next item is tree removal permits. The first one is public hearing consideration of a tree removal permit application submitted by John Madalia at Darwin. Maranas to the property located fifty-four, six, Suri Street for the removal of a white oak tree and removal of a persimmon tree. Mr. Dr. Fetter.
All right, um, here trees. The, um, white oak tree was struck by lightning, it's thirty, I don't know how many years.
Maybe five years ago.
Yeah, five years ago. Then you see in this picture, it has a split down middle, it's, um, it's a that tree has had this, it's, um, thirty-one inch diameter, and there's a seven inch diameter persimmon tree that's dying in the back corner of the yard. And that's it, that's, that's.
Okay, thank, did, did you?
Yes, I.
You're the applicant, sir, sir, come forward and tell us your name, please.
Yes, my name is Jonathan Madalia, I was at the forty-six, sorry, street. And, uh, we have really wanted to keep, especially the, uh, the white oak tree, but.
That is beautiful.
But we found that, uh, we just couldn't do it, it was hazardous, it could fall on our property, it could fall on our neighbor's property, and so we're lucky that it came to the, uh, conclusion that we didn't have to do that.
Thank you. If you, if you might say there, while we take the questions. Council President Bardia, any questions?
So, yeah, have you any plans to plant another oak, or are the other oaks growing there?
We don't have plans to plant another tree here.
Is there another place in your yard where a tree would go, or?
We have actually several, uh, quite large trees in the back, there's a very large oak tree on the other side of the house, uh, there's an anthill tree, there's, there's some other couple of other kinds of trees, there's, it's, it's almost woods.
Okay, clean up, all right. You're living in the woods. Council member Serco.
No questions.
Councilor Hallard.
No questions.
Councilor Kuvon.
No questions.
Councilor Robach.
No questions.
Today.
Okay, thank you. Council, you're prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, move that we approve the tree removal permit for, to remove white oak tree and the persimmon tree at fifty-four, oh, six, Suri Street.
Is there a second? Is your discussion hearing that all is in favor?
All right.
Thank you. The next item, public hearing consideration of a tree removal permit application submitted by V N McZugall for the property located at fifty-four, oh, five, Greyston Street for the removal of a tulip popper tree.
Uh, this is a forty-inch tulip popper that's, you can see in the picture, it's at the corner of the house in the backyard, and it has a, a large leader in the center that's gone back into the rock now where the all the leaders meet, so it's ahead of the street.
Thank you, is the applicant. Council, President Bardia, any questions?
I've got no questions on this one.
Councilor Serco.
No question.
Councilor Hallard.
No question.
Councilor Kuvon.
No question.
Councilor.
No questions.
And I take attention. Council, you're prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, uh, I move that we approve the permit application to remove the tulip popper tree at fifty-four, oh, five, Greyston Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is your discussion? Hearing that all is in favor?
All right.
Thank you. And now, um, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session to obtain legal advice from the town attorney, if you could, please.
Don't we need a reason to have so move on?
He's, no, he's good. Council. Mr. Town Attorney, can you? Can you?
All right, I move that we go into executive session to obtain advice from the town attorney, uh, to, for, for further code interpretation concerning enforcement.
So, so?
Yes.
Okay, is your second?
And we need to sign the statement.
Reporting in progress.